Good evening, everyone, and call this meeting of the Library Board of Trustees Order at 7:03 on May 16, 2023. I'd first like to go through a roll call, please. Trustee Hayes.
Yes.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Here.
Oh, gosh, hi, Dennis. Well, I apologize. Oh, my goodness. Trustee Razziano. Here. Trustee Freeman. Here. Trustee Burr. Here. Trustee Shaw. Here. We do have a forum, thank you very much. I'd like to, yeah. I'd like to offer or ask for a volunteer for Secretary Uprocham. Would someone be willing to take minutes for tonight? Until we officially elect a secretary? Or perhaps before meeting? Yes. Thank you so much, gentlemen. So with that, I recognize that we do not currently have a plat in this room. And that is on me, I forgot to bring it down. But typically in board meetings, there is a podium, so I'd just like to invite all of us to stand and some of the questions. I'd like to introduce to the lab of the United States of America. Mr. President, calling your permission stands. One, in general, is covered up. Indivisible, photographing judgment as well. So, I think that... This part of the meeting was suggested in order in the middle, so we just... So we have a plat upstairs, and I'm assuming that's one of the reasons why we have that plat. But typically elected for some in village governments in my work to have that plat in the room. So going forward, I'll make sure that I... So I apologize for that. This is my first and first in board meeting, so thank you all for your patience, and I now engage with this.
It's many of our first in board meetings, too.
And so before we move on to resolutions, I'd like to make call for any additions or changes to the agenda. Hearing none, I'd like to move next to the first official resolution for the evening. And this resolution is a resolution of thanks to Kathy Meyerhoff. And I will read forward the review of its stated facts. Whereas Kathy Meyerhoff was elected to the Library of Trustees in May 2011, and was elected to two subsequent four-year terms in 2015 and 2019. And whereas Ms. Meyerhoff had significant impact on the board in various leadership positions, such as secretary, as well as member and chairperson of various library board committees. And whereas Ms. Meyerhoff assumed the office of Library Board President in 2013, and in this role contributed to the organization's impact in the Lake Bluff community for a decade. And whereas Ms. Meyerhoff brought attention and discernment to evaluating monthly expenditures that contributed positively to accountability, fiscal responsibility, and effective communication and transparency by the library. And whereas Ms. Meyerhoff contributed to the ambigency and timeliness of monthly library board meetings. And whereas Ms. Meyerhoff, in her time on the board, helped oversee many building and furniture projects, from the replacement of the roof, installation of the new Lake Bluff Library interior sign, and most recently, the completion of the Stroh Reading Room in honor of former Library Trustee the Lady Carol Stroh. And whereas Ms. Meyerhoff contributed to the onboarding, learning, and overall development of her fellow trustees and a new library director as she assumed her inane role of mentor, coach, and tutor. Whereas, Ms. Meyerhoff discharged her responsibilities faithfully and in the spirit of service to the community. Now therefore being resolved by the Library of Trustees as Section 1 recognition of thanks, the Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and thanks Kathy Meyerhoff for 12 years of service to the Village of Lake Bluff as Library Trustee. Section 2, noted within the resolution, or hereby directs the Library Director to provide Ms. Meyerhoff with a signed copy of this resolution and a certificate of thanks. Section 3, if the date this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. So I would like a motion to pass this resolution. Do I have a motion? So move. Any opposed? A voice vote, please.
Individual.
Individual, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, thank you. And the ayes have it. And with that, I would like to invite Martha O'Hara, who is one of the library's official notaries, to notify the set of documents and make this final. And with that, I'd also like to invite Kathy Meyerhoff to come up to the front here, just very briefly, to have a small gift for you. Make sure I'm giving you the right one. Kathy, thank you so much for your years of service. It's been such a joy to work with you for the very short five months that I've been here. Your impact on this library is immeasurable. And you have done so much to grow this library, its reputation in the community, and the staff really appreciate all that you've done for the organization. And so with that, I'd just like to present this to you for your years of service. Thank you very much. You're beautiful. Would you like to photo the two of us?
I don't have an open.
It was not you, okay.
This is okay. Oh, you're so beautiful. Kathy Meyerhoff, recognition of your 12 years of service on the Lake Bluff Library and Board of Trustees. Thank you all, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have to say thanks to everybody here, staff. Pass, press, and congratulations to the new trustees, you're gonna enjoy this. It's not a lot of work, it's just a lot of devotion to something we love, you know, a lot of experience we serve. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Kathy. If you can see our picture, it's from she...
Sure.
Do you mind if we have a...
I want to open it up.
Yeah. It's a joke. This is part of the topics with the stands of this person, okay?
Yep.
Do you want her taken out, or is that...
If you don't mind, you know, if you take it out, it won't show up.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Oh, I was gonna say, Kathy's going. Time to... Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot.
Making you happy.
Yeah.
Thank you so very much.
Good luck on your first meeting here.
Thank you. I think you'll need it.
Yeah, and I figure in your signs, I think it's been 38 months before it's not here.
Wow.
It feels like new brother.
Thank you so much. And with that, I would invite Martha to use... For the vice. Said... Okay, so then I'm going to, we only have this, so we're not... We only have a president and a doctor.
I was wondering, so will we get that out there?
That's what I'm talking about. I will be getting you your notarized these resolution not today, because we don't currently have, as I recognize, a president or secretary. We need to elect them tonight first. So you're not telling the library yet. All right, well, thank you so much, Kathy. Hold on, I'm gonna hear. All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is the Resolution of Thanks, John Heitzelman of the Lake Bluff Public Library. Whereas John Heitzelman was elected to the Board of Library Trustees in May 2019. And whereas Mr. Heitzelman, in his time on the board, brought necessary attention and leadership to the importance of strategy and long-range planning for the organization. And whereas Mr. Heitzelman was a driving force in the creation of the Lake Bluff Public Library Foundation and its significant financial contribution to ensure the sustainability of the organization. And whereas Mr. Heitzelman was an advocate and regular contributor to board meetings voicing appreciation for Lake Bluff Public Library staff. And whereas Mr. Heitzelman is quoted saying, "The library deserves our substantial and continued support. I believe that the more educated we become as a society, the more civil we become, and that is a goal we're striving for. Libraries can play a critical positive role in this process. Our Lake Bluff Library in particular continues to serve this community as a valuable and critical resource in this so valued endeavor." And whereas Mr. Heitzelman discharged her responsibilities faithfully and in the spirit of service to the community. Now therefore being resolved by the Library Board of Trustees as follows. Section 1 recognition of thanks. The Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and thanks John Heitzelman for four years of service to the Village of Lake Bluff Public Library as a trustee. Section 2, notification of resolution, or hereby directs the Library Director to provide Mr. John Heitzelman with a signed copy of this resolution and certificate of thanks. Section 3, effective date this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval, passed by the Library Board of Trustees on the 16th day in May 2023, by a vote of... So with that, I'd like to invite a motion to approve this resolution. So move. Thank you. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you. And a voice vote. Trustee Razziano. I'm... Trustee Shaw. I'm... Trustee Hayes.
I'm...
Trustee Burr.
Hi.
Trustee Freeman. Hi. With that, resolution passes, and we'd like to say thank you to some of your people. With that, I'd like to invite you, John, also, to come up to the front. Receive this gift of our appreciation. Thank you so much. And yes, please, we invited you. We'll take that picture, that's okay.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
And I'll just give a small shout out to Jill. This is actually a book, it's an engraved book, but it's standing. She happened to find it, it's a local vendor, so it's really, I think, fitting for both of your time on the board. So thank you, Scott Shaw. We'll take that picture, that's okay.
Sure.
Are you going to hold it or no?
I'm sorry.
You know what you're doing. Yeah, it's like, so...
Right.
Yes, you got it, you got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like a picture of both of them?
Yes.
Okay, one more. Can you circle me, yeah? And then hold on.
We can go, there's a little bit more space.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you. That's like, stay there.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Maybe you'll see through all, maybe you'll... Have a wonderful evening, Kathy, you all have a card and some flowers. We'll let everyone get situated, and then we'll get started, we will guide them. That is not me on this. No, it's not me on this. Thank you.
Renee, we're just gonna test the microphone for a second. I'll let you know when the lights is ready.
Thank you, Kathy, thank you all. Thank you for the...
Go ahead, proceed. Go ahead and prepare your shoes.
Right, moving forward in the agenda, do we have any color here for open comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'd like to move on now to Board Member's office and the notarizing of the use of the Office of Office. So with this next portion of the meeting, I will be inviting Trustee Burr and Trustee Freeman to read to the polls, which I will be reading out loud. And so I invite you both to stand, and I will sit with you. So with this, I will read, and then after I read this statement, you would respond with an affirmative eye to. Both of office, State of Illinois, County of Lake, Board Member. So I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Library Trustee and at the Lake Bluff Public Library according to my best limited ability. Thank you, that's all you have.
Thank you.
So now with this, this also becomes a notarize, so I will invite your signatures here. And please pull up the top portion of the form. And Ms. Martha O'Hara will be here to notarize the list of the members. Did I give you the problem, or am I starting? Before my mic fails or anything.
Lights, be sure to leave the...
Is there any direction you can give them for official conversation? What are you asking? Page sixteen, page sixteen.
I don't know if you know that.
This is longer than I said. Since you... That's... Okay. I'm twenty-four, I'm forty, oh, I think I'm right. Same, you need to use this kind of like... Oh, obviously, yeah, so reach for each twenty-three. Twenty-two, seven, this is gonna make sure it's not... Now I will sign with our... So if it's documented, it will be stored on site here at the library for free. After apartment assigned, you will have our resources.
There's no going back, I mean.
Very much, and congratulations, trustee. And as the next item moving forward, what I'd like to do is move to appoint the Board of Trustee Officers. Now, what I've done is included in your packet a page from our governance policy that outlines the roles of the four officers, President, Vice President, Trever, and Secretary. Any member, any current member of the board can nominate, either themselves or someone else, for a role as an officer. And so with that, I am going to open the floor for any nominations. What we'll do is, with each officer position individually, we'll start with Secretary, who moved to Trever, Vice President, and then President. We will do a roll call vote after each officer to actually appoint that person in position. And we'll choose a member each. So I'm opening the floor for any nominations. For Secretary, thank you, sorry, would you like something? Do I have a second?
One second.
Any discussion?
I'll just say that, you know, it's like a national thing, so... It's like a task card. It's because you're, this is that much more involved in the meeting, and then they don't recap the meeting, and that's... So it's a great... We don't...
Any further discussion? With hearing none, what I'd like to do is go through the board for a roll call vote. So Trustee Razziano. I'm... Trustee Shaw. I'm... Trustee Hayes.
I'm...
Trustee Burr.
Hi.
Trustee Freeman. Hi. With that, congratulations. Thank you very much. So now I will move on to the nomination and appointment of our Trever. The Trever, the Sir, that's how I pronounce him, Sir, of the... Do I have any nominations at this?
Yeah, I'll continue if you have any.
Do I have a second? Is that enough, Kathy? Thank you. Any discussion? It seems very complicated. Hearing no discussion, I'd like to move towards to a roll call vote as well. For the position of Trever. Trustee Ball. I'm... Trustee Hayes.
I'm...
Trustee Burr.
Hi.
Trustee Freeman.
Hi.
Trustee Razziano. I'm... The ayes have it, the ayes are making a vote, thank you so very much. All right, so with that, I'll move now to the nomination of the Library Board Vice President. It's a kid who won by this one. I explained very... I'd like to nominate Jamie Durk. All right, Jamie Durk, I have a second. Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to confirm that I have spoken with Jamie Durk, and she has accepted the nomination of the board. It's not in person here at tonight's evening.
I just also, in the study, like, it's been taken up, so...
So with that, I'll move to a roll call vote. Trustee Shaw. Trustee Hayes.
I'm...
Trustee Burr.
I'm...
Trustee Freeman. Thank you. Trustee Razziano. I'm... The ayes have it, and Jamie is our new Vice President. With that, I'll move now towards the nomination of our Library Board Presidents. Do I have a poll nomination?
I'd like to now take advantage.
Do you have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Is where did I speak? If you are smooth. Are you... Hearing none, I'll move towards a roll call vote. Trustee Shaw. Okay. Trustee Hayes.
I'm...
Trustee Burr. Trustee Freeman. Hi. Trustee Razziano. I'm... It's our new Board President, who I could really pick as well. Very much, and maybe to all of our officers for your willingness to be your leadership to the board of this. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Before we talk about committee appointments, there is a change that is needed to be made to our bylaws. And the change is actually to move the Bylaws and Policy Committee to a standing committee. Previously, according to our policy, this was not a standing committee. This was an ad hoc committee. But there's been ample discussion in the board since I've been on myself with our former president or current president, several of you, about the need for the library to have this as a standing committee and the fact that we have lots of policy work to do. And so with that, I have drafted a resolution for your consideration in your packet. The proposed change review to policy 1.6.1, and it would be the addition of the following text. Bylaws and Policy Committee, the Bylaws and Policy Committee shall be comprised of at least two trustees and the library director. Responsibilities include, but are not limited to, creating and adhering to regular schedule of library policy review, reviewing recommendations from library staff for policy changes, discussing changes to current library policy, and making recommendations for policy changes to the library board. I'd like to open it to any discussion of the proposed resolution.
I'll just add that, taking with... Some of the... Some of the situations we've dealt with as a board in the last six months, it's that this policy to be up at, I think, to... Then we'll launch the library to, like, have its current best practice. So, I think.
One of the instances for this is actually a recent training I attended just this last week about running effective board meetings through rails, which is a consortium where... And one of the things that I recommend is a policy to guide expectations for college, which we do not currently do have. That would just be one of many policies that we would consider creating or, you know, actually editing. We received a public comment recently, a couple of board meetings ago, about a particular book in our collection, a public resident with a inventory of our materials. And in doing that research, intersecting with the board at previous board meetings, it was definitely necessary upon our research with staff and myself, that that collection of policy needed to be updated as well, with some important conditions being needed addressing the current state of collection of the library. So those are just two examples that I share, which is why I presented this policy change to the board. Any further discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to pardon this policy? Hearing none, do I have a motion to regarding this policy proposal?
I'll motion to. Check that to.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? So just to clarify, this would be in addition to an existing policy. Yep, the policy already says we would be having this.
We're adding bylaws and policy of standing, non-ad hoc committee, yes.
And so then therefore this paragraph would be added to the policy under that list. So with that, with the motion second, as is this policy, we are going to move forward with roll call vote. Trustee Shaw. Aye. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Burke. Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano. All right. The eyes have it, this policy has been updated. Moving the bylaws and policy committee to its remaining place. And so now we can move on to nominations and appointments to our standing committees. And the document that you have in your board meeting packet, this list obviously is before the motion and approval that you sent. So we will be adding the bylaws and policy committees to this list and discussing appointments to this. Tonight, we will only be appointing members. Each committee will schedule a meeting soon after tonight to elect the Chair of their committee. So today is just number three. And so I will move through this list of standing committees. Just from the top of this list through the bottom, with the last one being the bylaws and policy committee. So the first committee that we'll discuss membership of is the Building and Grounds Committee. Responsibilities include reviewing proposals for the repair or improvement of the building and/or landscaping and making recommendations to the board. Is there any interest of the board members in being a member of this? Yes. Same. Trustee Burke. Any other interest in this committee membership?
How are you going to handle communications with that change?
So if the nomination or the suggestion comes to the table, I will confirm that I'm communicating with that when they make sense. Similarly to the officer.
I would like to nominate Jamie Durk to be one of the main grounds.
And I have communicated with trustee Durk that he is so very interested in this committee and would like to continue for success. Any other self-appointments or discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion of the board to approve the committee membership of Building and Grounds for trustee Durk and trustee Burke? Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay. Okay, this is another voice vote. So it's a roll call votes. Trustee Shaw. Aye. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Burke.
Aye.
Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano. Thank you so much to Sandy and to Jamie, who's not here, for being members of the Building and Grounds Committee. I will say as an aside, there is much work to be done and looking forward to the paint with people. All right. Moving on to the next committee. This committee is named the Community Engagement Committee. And so the responsibilities include acting as community liaison to the community and library organizations, including Rails. This committee shall also undertake any pressure necessary to the community or public regarding the library's status activities and needs. I'll just add, in addition to what's listed in our actual policy, the Community Engagement Committee will take a leadership role in the development of our strategic plan and engaging with our community in that area. And so it really is, it is not necessarily direct to staff. It's really engaging with the public in that way. So do I have any members of the board who would like to identify themselves as interested to participate? Trustee Graziano. Any other interests? The requirement is at least two trustees.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Jamie. Trustee Graziano and trustee Burke, do I have a motion to accept the self-nominations of trustee Graziano and trustee Burke of the committee? Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, this would be a roll call vote. To trustee Shaw. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Burke. Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Jamie and Sandy, for participating on any occasion. For the work of you. You don't currently have a strategic plan, so this is going to be very important. Moving on to the next committee, the Sir Finance Committee. I will read our policy. The Finance Committee states the Treasurer shall be included as a member of the committee. So that is elected Treasurer, don't please. Responsibilities include but are not limited to approving a preliminary budget for board approval, recommending the tax levy for board approval, monitoring funds invested, reporting the preliminary investment policy. Do I have any current members in the board interested in participating in the finance group in addition to current Treasurer of the building? I would like to.
Matt was on it before, did he say he did?
He did. So if there is a nomination for Matt, I can share with you his intent.
I'll nominate.
Okay, perfect.
I can second if it's necessary.
So I did speak to Matt in advance and he is happy to continue membership on the finance committee and accepts your nomination. Thank you, though. So with that, just to review, that is going to be trustee Shaw and trustee Valley along with trustee Hayes. Any other interest? Although that does meet the requirements, so we don't necessarily. Hearing none, I will be more for motion to accept the current trustees who have expressed interest in being members of the Finance Committee. That's a win. Thank you, trustee Graziano. Second, sorry. All right, so we smell toward a vote, a voice vote. Trustee Shaw. Aye. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Burke. Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Great. The eyes have it. Thank you, trustee Shaw, trustee Valley, and trustee Hayes for your continued support and number one, I would say, thank you. The next committee that we will discuss is the Human and Resources Committee. Responsibilities include preparation of the annual review of the library director for discussion by trustees prior to the formal review and assisting the library director in the preparation of his or her annual goals for the coming year. The library director is responsible for making a full review of all other library. Are there any current library trustees who would be interested in participating?
I'd like to say I'm going to. Thank you, trustee. I'd also like to continue.
Trustee Shaw.
Also like to nominate Jamie, who's been part of this committee.
And I can confirm that she accepts that nomination. Any other discussion? With that, do I have a motion to accept trustee Graziano, trustee Shaw, and trustee Durk as members of the Human Resources Committee? Do I have a second? This would be a roll call vote as well. Trustee Shaw. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Burke. Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Thank you so very much for your interest in being a member of the group. We have a lot of good work already in tow. And so I think that we'll just continue with some of the work. All right, so the next committee on the board to be considered is the Intergovernmental Committee. And this is where I like to highlight the area of policy that is being correct. Because the first sentence is, "The Intergovernmental Committee shall be comprised of at least two trustees and the library director." However, this committee is specifically for intergovernmental agreement with the museum and the village regarding their renting of the space of the building. And so having recently reviewed the board-proved agreements and the contract that we have with the museum, the Intergovernmental Committee actually states that it is the library director and one other trustee. So Policy Committee, again, more work to do down here, but I do want to clarify that the actual servicing table of the library sign of the 1990s does state specifically who the membership should be. And it is only one trustee of a library director. On the other side of the museum, it is their executive director and one of their board members. So there is a balance there of participation. And then the village is also representing this committee, so it is a total hundred of five. So with that, I'll continue reading. As established by the 1999 Intergovernmental Agreement between the Lake Left History Museum, the Village of Lake Left, and Lake Left Library, Intergovernmental Committee of two museum representatives, two library trustees, this is where it's from, and a village representative shall be four times annually to discuss concerns concerning activities related to both the museum and the library. The committee chair shall prepare an annual report. So I believe there is interest among the board members in terms of still acting as a member of the committee. I can speak with trustee Durk in advance. So I would be calling for a nomination for trustee Durk. And I heard spoke to her in advance that she would need to participate as the board trustee representative. And so at that point, it's just the one trustee. So given that, do I have a motion to approve trustee Durk as the trustee representative of the Intergovernmental? That's a win. Right, second. Okay. Any discussion? This would be another roll call vote. So trustee Shaw. Aye. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Burke.
Aye.
Trustee Allen Freeman, excuse me, I'm looking at a task, so I have this. Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
That, the eyes have it, thank you, trustee Durk, for continuing your role on this. Three more to go, we're almost there. The next committee that we have is the Long Range Planning Committee. As I mentioned earlier, the library currently does not have a strategic plan. And so in collaboration with the Community Engagement Committee, the Long Range Planning Committee would also have a key role in helping drive the development of this long-range plan. So responsibilities include working with library staff in preparation of the long-range plan. The long-range plan or strategic plan of sometimes should always be in place. I read it, and that, we don't care about that one, so. But we will have one, as we've been good word of the trustees and staff. So with that, do I have any interest among the board to be a member of this group? Yes. Trustee Freeman, thank you. Also, I'm just. Any other interest? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the current membership of trustee Freeman and trustee Shaw on a long-range planning? Do I have a second? Second. So this is also a roll call vote. Trustee Shaw. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Burke.
Aye.
Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Thank you so much, the eyes have it. I would like you to trust Freeman and trustee Shaw for their contribution on the operations team. For the work. The next committee is the Technology Committee. And the responsibilities include assessing the library's technology needs and making recommendations to the board. Do I have a recommendation or nomination for self-nomination or nominations? Not in this room, for most of us. And I can say, I spoke with him and he accepts one nomination.
I'd like to continue on that.
Thank you. Any other interest? In that, do I have a motion to accept the membership of trustee Valley or trustee Hayes on the Technology Committee? So do I have a second? Sorry. Roll call votes start with trustee Shaw. Aye. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Burke.
Aye.
Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Thank you so much to trustee Valley and the eyes have it, trustee Hayes as well, for being on our Technology Committee. And so the last committee, which is our very new, just a few minutes old, Standing Committee of Bylaws and Policy. And so with that, I'll just read approved policy change again to describe this committee. There is a new member. So the Bylaws and Policy Committee shall be comprised of at least two trustees and library director. Responsibilities include but are not limited to creating and adhering to the regular schedule library policy review, reviewing recommendations from library staff for policy changes, discussing changes to current library policy, making recommendations for policy. Do I have any interest of the current board members or participating as a member on the Bylaws and Policy Committee? Do you have a trust? It's probably that and that. And I can confirm, having spoken today, that Jamie is interested in accepting. And as this is the last committee, I will just mention that at any point the president may determine that we gave them new policies of any of these as well, that they are a standing member of the. So to review trustee Freeman, trustee Valley, any other interest? I have a second. Any interest, trusty? With that, do I have a motion to accept the membership of the Bylaws and Policy Committee of trustee Freeman, trustee Valley, and trustee Graziano? So do I have a second?
One second.
Last roll call vote. Trustee Shaw. Aye. Trustee Wade.
Aye.
Trustee Burke.
Aye.
Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Thank you, our eyes have it. Thank you to Matt and Ally and Jenny for participating in our standing committee. So thank you. Thank you for participating. Thank you for participating and reading of our meeting's board. So, um, really quite before moving on to the next item, I'll just share that I'll be in touch with all of the committee members to get the next or the first meeting of this this one year for your committees, um, on the books. I found success, you may do know, so we'll work on creating schedules to, um, find a time that meets for myself and then the young. Um, I anticipate the Bylaws Committee, um, will be one of the first ones to be scheduled, given, um, the library has two current policies that are in almost nearing the end of draft form that we need to present to you. With that, we'll work on scheduling the rest. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. It's going to be, uh, the approval of the minutes. So in your packets, you have a copy of the minutes from April eighteenth, um, for trustees meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April eighteen, two thousand twenty-three fourth? Or any amendments or edits prior to the? Any motion?
Was that a meeting?
No, yeah. I'm sorry. I wanted to go through the minutes. I'm probably ignoring it. You have to be your own second. That is Robert Tools' thunder. How do you know? I don't think either.
I'm gonna be second. You know what? I'm gonna be second. Here's why. I watched the video today.
Okay.
And I read the minutes today.
Can you use that as a, like, value? Even though she wasn't.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't. We just weren't.
Right?
No.
I'm supposed to be second, and then, um, for some reason, I, I will be searching for her too.
It needs to come back next month.
It needs to come back. Um, so with that, of the people that we vote, um, do I have, we're just gonna do, um, a voice vote. So all in favor? I, all opposed? Same? Two people. Oh, sorry. I shouldn't focus. Do you have any objections?
We have to just tag it with a.
Yes, okay. So, have you done the sections at four minutes before? Oh, okay. Okay. Staff is shaking their head. Got it. Um, so typically, if you are, if you can vote, do vote, either yes or no. Um, you have a third option if you're able to vote, which is to abstain to not share, um, if you would prefer not to give a opinion now. Yeah, but if you are unable to vote, because you weren't having a meeting, in this case, unable to ability, unable to vote on the minutes because he was not at the meeting, you would abstain. And in the case of trustee Freeman and trustee Bur, they were not sworn in, were not at the meeting, they would also abstain. But do I have any objections? There we go. Trying something new. There we go. Something. With that, the minutes, um, with the exception of, uh, my researching of Robert Tools, in these minutes, you have to come back next month. I will do that. Um, but unless that is, um, I'm unable to, uh, the minutes have been. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm paying up for the elders, as you are.
No, I appreciate that. Alright, moving on to the next item of the agenda is the is the Director's Report. And so what I'd like to do is, um, to share with the new trustees that this, uh, Director's Report is a relatively new form. It's new to both, of course, um, but it's new to the rest of the trustees as well. And so if ever there's any, um, suggestions or feedback about the way that this report is, uh, prepared or shared with the trustees, I'm always open to that. I'm gladly welcome. Um, given the length of the meeting, I will provide a high level overview of the Director's Report. Um, I do want to say that, um, April was very busy with regards to, um, performance evaluations. We had moved, um, and our schedule of performance evaluations to align with this year. Uh, and so I'd just like to, um, share recognition to the managers who, um, weren't able to do that. Um, and now staff received their raises on the first of May and already had their sit-down conversations with their managers, and already have a sense of their goals into the next year. Um, so, um, really gratitude to the managers for helping with that. Um, I will say two, uh, continued work is being done in the process of improvement, um, both in the, uh, financial areas, but also you could say we're processing our space. Um, we have submitted record, uh, destruction, uh, requests. Uh, we're very happy about that. There are many paper records in my office that you know you've seen that are either digitized um, or, uh, appropriately destroyed. Um, with that, I'll just say we've also been able to successfully arrange for pickup of a lot of equipment, whole broken furniture. Um, really did a lot of strengthening. Um, so our space has been, um, evaluated, our record is being evaluated. We're really kind of trying to create, um, as much, uh, space metaphorically and, uh, digitally to as we can as we move forward with the coming year. Um, other things that I really wanted to highlight, um, actually is in this document. Um, we don't currently have a correspondence section in our agenda, but I would love to, um, add that in future meetings because, uh, just this month, I have, oh, it's been a bit. Uh, that was fine. No, I started to go about the correspondence. Yes, absolutely. Um, I'd like to highlight, uh, first, the friends who sponsored a really wonderful lunch for the staff, um, as part of the actual library. Um, and so thank you to the friends of the library for the generosity. Um, we've had two specific conversations with the public. Um, and one I'd like to share with you, uh, this is written by Phoebe, who is not a attendance tonight. Um, she is, uh, had, uh, the reference circulation manager. Um, the first conversation was with a patron regularly attends a very popular program we host called Trivium. It's at the Lake Left Brewery. And she told Martha and Phoebe how much she and her family love the program, but also love how much they love the library and everything the staff do here. Um, she said she feels safe letting her eight-year-old daughter come with her or even come by herself. She's amazed at all of the services the library offers, and she wanted staff to know how valued each member is because, quote, "Because you probably don't hear that often." And so I really just want to, um, acknowledge the staff who work so hard each and every day with everything that is thrown at them. Um, and really to say the public sees you and values you. So thank you very much. Um, after she came in, right after the same time, um, a patron came in from out of town with her grandchildren who live in Lake Left. We see that a lot. Um, you know, relatives coming in just for a tour time but visiting. Um, he was very excited to tell us about the outcome of his library's trustee election. Um, apparently there were slated candidates who were running for, uh, the basis of luggage room books from the library, and they'd lost by nearly ten point margin. He talked about how important it was for everyone to be able to access information. And he had a great conversation with Phoebe about book banning that is happening across the country. And he needed ways to pay for paying attention to his local elections and supporting his library. Um, I think that is a really, um, uh, it's, this conversation is one I've had with other patrons of the community too. People surprised of what's happening about book banning and, um, questioning of, um, all the library's school library materials. And, um, people are just really engaged and engage, engage with all of the staff about this. So we have regular conversations at the staff level about this during staff meetings. And, um, I'm, I'm really proud that, uh, this very, uh, important conversation was had at the first. So with that, those are two, um, featured correspondence second one. Um, I'd like to also share with you that, um, with regarding, uh, technology upgrades, um, we have, uh, an agreement that is currently being reviewed right now with the, our legal team. Um, and this agreement is for our new ILS. And it's not a new ILS as it is so much an extension of our current contract. The ILS is, um, the abbreviation is, you know, um, Integrated Library System. And this is both the public catalog computer, what people, um, can come in and type out, they can find books. It's also the staff side. So it's all the bidley graphic information of all our materials. It's the account records. It's all of it. It's a large, um, contract and it's a significant price tag. It will come to the board next month. Um, and so I just want to say that we've already been researching this and, um, one of the things that I was really pleased about was that we're able to lock in at our current rate and not have that increase for three years, um, given technology increases. I think that is a great value to the library. And also it means that we're trying to research what, if anything, we want to do with our current ILS. Do we want to stay with our current vendor? Do we want to stay with our current vendor and use a different product? Do we want to, uh, potentially research consortia? I know that, uh, board members, actually members of the public have expressed interest in employing consortia. Um, you know, the book libraries that share resources, they actually share that a lot too. Um, there are rare funds that could be appropriated to the library to help with that preparation. Um, so the three-year extension allows us that to make the research. Um, because we cannot make that decision now. We don't have the information yet and we don't, um, have all of our reps in the room for figuring out what the best option is for the library financially and also the usability of the features for the patrons. That's what I wanted to highlight with regards to, um, the Director's Report. There's a lot more in there, um, but in, uh, in the interest of time, I generally try to keep this, um, five to seven minutes. Um, are there any questions about the Director's Report?
You, you said at a note earlier about, um, you talk about book banning and, um, holding parts back. Is, why do you sort of feedback, uh, the libraries about that, that comment?
So the legislation that's coming to our current, um, Secretary of State, Alabama, Lexian Williams, and we, he's also our state librarian. Um, he is fully backed and supported in this legislation by the Illinois Library Association. And the vast majority of libraries, even across the country, including the American Libraries Association, is supportive of, is supportive of this legislation. Um, it would be the first of its kind nationwide, um, as a way to, uh, really support the institutions that uphold intellectual freedom, um, which is a cornerstone of the American Libraries Association and the Dallas Libraries, um.
Is this the right to read legislation or something in addition to?
Um, so the, the legislation itself has been named a couple of different things. Um, some of the phrases have been used, the banning of fans. Um, and so I believe it is also known by the state of Illinois as the right. There is another piece of legislation that's coming out, um, from that same department, um, but it's slightly different, doesn't affect libraries. But this is the one that's getting the spotlight. Um, and so public libraries, uh, support intellectual freedom, which should be all of them. Um, and I say that it's not necessarily true depending on what the boards are of those libraries. Um, if the library has a supportive board of those types of thousands of, um, uh, policies, uh, you know, they, they would in turn, I would imagine, be supportive of this legislation. That's not true for all boards in all libraries of the state. Um, electors have brought, um, people, uh, against intellectual freedom to board memberships and board, uh, election. Um, so I would say that, um, with resounding support, the Illinois Library Association supports this and, um, libraries across the state as well. I have not that piece to spend you after tonight's board meeting, um, about another perspective of this. And so, um, I thought, let's wait till the morning, maybe in the. Sure, but in summary, basically, this talks about, um, removing resources to those communities that already may have fewer resources anyway, and how that might actually be a detriment to those communities, um, that financial retribution may not be the best, but right now it's the only opportunity that the state has to, um, move this forward or, um, share the support for intellectual freedom. So it's a very interesting article. I'll share it. Um, because I think it makes a. Any other questions about the Director's Report?
Are you wanting to talk about the friends you have asked to get separate from?
Yes, um, and with this, typically the Director's Report includes, um, an overview of the statistics. Um, I do want to say that, uh, we made some slight changes in our statistical information, um, that thanks to, um, Anna, um, one of our staffers here. She's gonna be working with Martha, O'Carra, myself, and Phoebe, um, to, uh, really, be, not redo, but, um, reformat the statistics in a way that I think is a little bit more digestible for the board. Um, and in a way also brings the statistic that maybe of the most value to the board to this conversation. So I just want to say, especially with the new, uh, trustees, this is built in transition. Um, but, uh, some of this, it showed a lot of what we discussed last month. Um, in-house visits are not quite recovered from pre-pandemic times, but our number of circulation, our circulation statistics, um, are really back at, um, pre-pandemic times. And that includes the, um, the hundreds of materials that we add to our collection for digital collections too. Um, so we've been having discussions at a staff level of how to continue to welcome people back to the library while also knowing there are so many wonderful community events that people have options to attend to. Um, so, you know, community engagement does a lot of different things. It goes to people who may not be able to come to the library, but it could also bring people to the library that need a thought of. I'm looking forward to, I want to be with Jill and the great staff to do a lot of community engagement work this summer. And hopefully, um, re, uh, remind people of the library and post programs on site even more. Um, but with that, I do want to really briefly mention that, um, our entire list of funding requests were, uh, by the Friends of the Library. Um, we've taken, yeah, it's amazing. They're done around speed. Um, and including a brand new baby cart, which will be for this room, lot full and, um, very easy to use that will help support board meetings like this. Um, uh, we've taken kind of a new approach to, um, funding requests to the Friends of the Library and providing them a variety of options as opposed to just one. Um, and, uh, not always knowing, you know, what the friends might want to support and what not. They have, um, the ability to discuss every item and vote on every item if they want to support it. And so, um, I'm working with all the levels of staff to come up with ideas across the organization for funding requests. Um, one that's not on here, that was its home, um, were new staff chairs on the, um, first floor. Um, and so, uh, you might have seen a really fun Instagram of staff spinning around in our new chairs. Um, and so the Friends were able to support that. Um, but everything in this, uh, request was approved. So thank you so much to the Friends.
Correct. It was sort of, you know, the Director's Report and Friends Request. Um, a few months ago, there was, um, a request made to the Friends, I think it was a request being proceeded for funding of new tables. I know a lot of the tables have been made for, like, there's something about new tables in the.
Was there an official Friends Request? I'm gonna ask the sales. I don't know officially. You know, if there was an official Friends Request to the Friends for tables prior to?
It was, yes, but it was just mentioned that we would be coming to them with a request. So it was more of a for your note. Yeah, because we didn't have a quote at that time. So it was more about, we're really interested in purchasing new furniture and if they'd be interested, but we're not quite there yet. That was it.
Um, have the new tables, again, they're the, they are the, um, patron tables that are near the, you know, there's one that I haven't, are shipped.
Yes, okay.
Get your elbows in.
So this happened prior to, so kind of like a. So this happened prior to, so kind of like I'm really interested. Um, and then I was hired, started in January and staff and I had a meeting where we discussed and prioritized. All the furniture in the library, we talked about what's wrong with, what's not, what will happen, what's. Positive impact of the patrons and we really came up with a list of what we would be able to ask for. But prior to the actual ask, I met with um. LBI, Library Furniture International, they came out a couple of times and what they delivered to me was um. Uh, really a packet of. What we could potentially ask for for these different types of furniture requests. So um the tables on the um first and second floor, um, the chairs on the first and second floor for those tables. And another item was a new table for the um computers. On the first floor and then the last one, so there are four different types of lighting for me, um, for us. Um, and the last one is a brand new bar of second, uh, not the second floor, but the computers. So I have four essentially packages of furniture that um we have the ability to ask for funding or prioritize our individual funding for. Um.
Okay, correct, you have you have a take number now as to this, I guess.
And I have specs, I have pictures and so um there was a a slight um. Change of the friends of the library meeting dates, um, unbeknownst to me and Joe. And so they ended up meeting, so I wasn't able to present the furniture request to them. And um I do think that this is an in-person type of conversation. They can um review requests, it can even, I won't take photos of me now. But um they recommended the precedent, when she recommended that I come to the visual, I needed to present it there. And so there is a little bit more of a delay in that request. Um, but I think they'll get grounds and this will be a topic on they'll get the grounds. Um, the staff and I have discussed um how to present to the friends. We think asking the friends for um. The first floor set of two tables and chairs would be um a very visible uh possible uh. Uh, funding request for them. Um, and then we can prioritize the library ones, the chairs and the tables on the second floor. Um, and then the computer, people on the bar could be at a later date. Um, so I have those price notes that will be shared. Going around. Any other final questions of the board of the director's report? Thank you. Moving on, um, I'd like to uh discuss um. The April financials. And before I do that, I just want to highlight in your packet, you do not have a copy of the balance sheet. Uh, trustee Burt, trustee Green, and you wouldn't know if this is your first one to the board packet, but maybe if you've read. Previous board packets or seen previous board meetings, you would notice that in the financial set of the meeting. Um, there's obviously presentation of the balance sheet. And so um. Uh, I have a pair uh kind of an explanation as to why there's no balance sheet. And I wrote it out because I really want to make sure I got it right. I worked with Bettina, who is the finance director at The Village. And The Village um is one of the players that helps with our financials. We outsource our accounting firm, um, Lauterbach and Amane. And um Bettina and The Village uh give a lot of support of our accounting and financials. And so um at last month's board, we named trustees out and shared several inquiries about number of reference to the month's balance sheet report. To answer these questions, I met with Bettina O'Connell, the finance director at The Village of Orange left to find out more. Context for new board members and I. The library does not handle our accounting and housework closely with The Village to observe those processes. What I learned from Bettina influenced the decision to not include the balance sheet report this month, which is why you noticed it's not in the packet. I explained um that my my predecessor's process of sharing the monthly balance sheet report from the S and A. But this was something we did with the board each month. Um, and when I shared that with her, this is what she said. This report is not a real-time representation of the library's fund balance. The B S and A software is adding accounting lines that are not part of the fund balance. And she herself doesn't even use this report. In addition, the library has multiple accounts across multiple vendors, Lake Forest Bank, Illinois Fund, American Express, to name a few. The B S and A software does not communicate directly with these fund lines on a real-time basis. The revenue and expenditure report is the best representation of the most up-to-date and current book of the library's cash account. It provides the actual number, the change in fund balance for the fiscal year. In addition, and balance sheet typically includes both funds eighty and eighty-two. Eighty is our revenue and expenditure report, but fund eighty-two is our donations report. In addition, fund eighty-two, which is included in the balance sheet report, is not even included in the audit, it's not a reportable fund. And so in the balance sheet reports, tracking movement of payables that we don't need and skewing the numbers. In summary, I do not recommend the library use this report. The report that best suits the needs of the director and the library board to review monthly financials is the revenue and expenditure report. So I asked Bettina at the library if it ever had the auditor out for a presentation. When the presentation was uh given at the annual audit. And she said this is something, I mean, I told her this is something that I have to constitute in my previous libraries. When the auditor report is weekly, um, the auditor, you know, the representative comes from Sigich, which is the company that provides our audit. They attended board meetings and answered questions for the trustees. And um, you know, basically they're they're available for anything, any discussion. So when I asked this of the board for the slide, she said no, that Bettina was always the one was the person presenting audit report for the library board. But she confirmed that Sigich provides this service to boards and could definitely present this audit report when it is finished for us. So typically the time where you get the audit, um, the post close June first. And then um they take a few months to prepare the audit report. And then I believe last year was November, um, so I threw down the, um, as I was interviewing for this decision. Um, that's usually when the audit report is given. And so um it would be my recommendation that, and hers as well, we both agree this year going forward. Especially because of the library's working relationship with The Village about our financials. It would be beneficial to have Bettina and Sigich there to be present and answer questions. So thus with this advice and information, I mean, the decisions no longer include the balance sheet in the monthly board packet. I actually also spoke with Bill about this on Friday, Bill, do you have anything to add about this?
No, I mean, it's it's, it could be misleading information and it's not giving. But Bettina said you look at the the difference of revenues and expenses. It's not his revenues, it's a larger than expenses, so.
Well, um, thank you, Bill. So opening up the floor for questions or comments about this information that I shared with you.
To clarify, the auditor is engaged by The Village on behalf of the election.
So um our particular accounting firm is Lauterbach and Amane and they help us with our monthly statements. I send out our monthly statements to them, they work with Bettina um to update our current control report in the S and A, the software program that we use. Um, but at any given time, it's never a real-time flow better. Um, because of the delays of getting the the monthly report statements to Lauterbach and Amane and then them updating the S and A. So as they are coming, as we have been sharing the balance. It's in no way, shape or form capturing that that number and that's why the audit at the end of. All of this in the fiscal year, it shares that on balance. And that's the most accurate representation factor.
So fund balance is what we have, I guess, like a whole field we call. And my record about Shillwell, market wrong, this happening, I don't want to hear a thousand dollars in. Always being, well, I think, that's right, um, and we have to have between twenty-five, fifty percent. So I'm ready for any rate. And so that's the, that's something that we would have to, to, if we ever patch it, it was. So um each year, the board has set a goal, at least six years, I don't know, for to deliver some money to reserve in our little rainy day fund. So that, you know, without forbid, a card, I just move it on, we have money to pay to that board, our insurance. And so we we are looking at the end of this layer numbers here, there's still. Invoices and things to be paid for three years, like totally not dusted. But hopefully we'll be, you know, exceeding.
Yeah.
We set out for reserve from each, but each of the two.
That's about sixteen thousand, so we want to. Um, that that is going to be a lot, and capture, push it to go.
A percentage based, not like a daily operation basis.
Just, yeah, I mean, if our operating, if our operating budget ran a million dollars, we we would want to get somewhere between two fifty and five hundred. Um, I think we're four hundred, maybe range.
Any other discussion or questions, Bill?
Question over the board management.
Yeah, we can move on to that, yeah, sure.
I mean, he's basically looks at the people of month and they compare it to the month of last year. And it goes to the year-to-date of this year and the year-to-date of last year. This body said this was sort of the end of the financial year, so pretty much that means you're seeing um. There will be some changes to some of the accounts.
A couple of examples of um uh costs that are still pending, um. He just uh received our invoice from the water here, which we heard, which we had installed about another two ago. Um, that's about three thousand dollars. Uh, I only recently received the invoice from Midwest Pantanal, which is our gate chat company, they're formerly known as Free Miller. Um, and that money, uh, that project is about eight thousand, nine thousand dollars. So there will be some more um costs associated with building maintenance. Um, but I do want to point, um, I do want to point out, so on pages uh one, two, and three. Um, you're going to see that this is the um, this is the revenue expenditure report, so this is that report that I was referencing. Um, if you go to the very last page, page three, um, the last line, net of revenue expenditures. So um this third column, year-to-date balance. So this is the balance as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, is ninety-one thousand, six hundred thirty-seven and seventy-three cents. So that is what is called fund balance. And so that is what Bill was referencing, um, we are very, we are in very good shape to have more than we typically do if we look one hour over. At the same time of this year, but last year, we had a fund balance of forty-one thousand. And so for the new trustees, I just want to share a couple of um reasons why. Um, there are several, um, but a big piece of this is that um there's a, there's a salary difference with my predecessor and mine. Um, I believe also there was savings in some insurances that my predecessor had and also I do. Um, as a uh individual only, without additional family. And so um additional reasons why we had um a very successful year financially in our passport program. Um, we saw in our report that um. He uh broke thirty thousand, which is ten thousand dollars more than he earned from this program last year. Um, pretty amazing considering since I started, I said, okay, let's manage our own schedules and find a better balance of. Of working the desk and passports and so um, you know, actually I think that um, given the interest in the community. Uh, that number is going to continue being so strong. Um, other reasons why the library was without a director for about seven months. During that time, there wasn't any capacity to do uh building and maintenance topics such as um painting the exterior, which was prioritizing. Um, by the building and grounds, there was just a lack of capacity to get that done. Just because staff were working super hard at work for the desk and covering all the patrons. Um, and then a lot of time spent uh trading. Um, so those are just some of the reasons why, um, I also think that. And staff have heard me say this in previous board meetings, I think that we need to really. Look closely at our budget lines to make sure that we're budgeting appropriately for what our actual cost for each line. If you can kind of see um at the right of your um revenue and expenditure report, the percentage budget used. Those numbers are kind of all over the place. And I would really like to prefer to get a top hundred for all of those as much as we possibly can. Some years, there's just some flexibility that you need, but in other cases, some are much higher, some are much lower. So I think that gives us some work to reflect on what is, what is the actual need that we're budgeting for for this next year. So that would be some really good work for the the next budget year. Um, so I think again, we're very, we're in a great place financially, very financially sound, um, very different from when the new roof was needed. But I think this will only help um us plan uh our projects forward.
The other big one was the interest portion.
Yes, thank you, oh, oh, work.
Uh, yeah, the uh. The reserve money is that for village, you want to look at very unfortunate hours. Uh, instead of, yeah, the savings account, point zero, one, one percent, whatever. It 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 generally put into a uh higher interest account, so that generated about extra twenty thousand dollars over the past year. So all of those, all the community provided us that, so.
Thanks for having me, Bill, it's important, that was a great change. So any further discussion on our financials? So this is where I invite a motion to accept the April two thousand twenty-three revenue and expense report.
A motion to accept the uh revenue expense report.
Thank you, Bill, do I have a second? A second. Great, so um this is uh, this is a uh roll call vote. Trustee Shaw, I'm, trustee Hayes, I'm, trustee Burr, I'm, trustee Green, um, trustee Graziano. Thank you, and the April two thousand twenty-three revenue and expenditure report has been. Has been, thank you very much. So moving on to the next financial report in your board packet is the check disbursement report. So as with any business, um, we do have uh, we do have expenses. And so at our monthly meetings, you um take time to review um what those are. Um, and so after the board meeting, uh, checks are already prepared, we have two trustees. Um, uh, our officers, actually the officers were the only ones that uh signed checks. Um, two of our officers come to the library before board meeting, if not based on your checks. And then after the approval of checks, those are mailed out to payers. Um, so this is what uh those expenses are for the month of uh April nineteenth through May seventeenth. So are there any questions about the April check disbursement report?
I am a part of the committee, so the innovative interfaces check. Is that the payment for three years?
No, so we're actually ahead of the game when it comes to the um, the contract with Innovative from our ILS. Um, we are currently in our last year of a ten-year contract. So um that is the amount that uh we are asking to lock in now for the next three years. So the agreement that we will um. Will be brought to the board next month is actually going to be for the next three years. So we are in our final year.
So this payment is for May first, trying to say to April thirtieth.
Danger is letting me go.
It's for twelve and three.
Yes, exactly. We always ask them, can you wait until the locking, before meeting and. And so you can see it's a considerable amount, but it is a software that does. Basically makes, helps the library um do a lot of what we do without it.
We go back to current catalog.
Kind, but I don't know how to stay on the field, um, there could be a stamp of value in our hands, so. Kind, but I don't know how to stay on the field, um, there could be a stamp of value in our hand, so. You can do so much more. Any other questions about the check dispersal? If anyone's curious, um, when, uh, Lawrence was correcting the checks, there was a slight error with the printer that was running. So there's really nothing in various areas, just a mislead. And we've had to call a copyer a company a couple of times. And there's a picture now where a copyer written down, um, with Bob Hardy on it, and there's a quote that says.
Yeah, it's Bob Hardy, because it's all in German.
Yes, uh, yes, yes. So we are working on that, so I apologize for, um, those for your checks. Um, any, uh, further discussion? If not, is there a motion or is it being approved for check dispersal report? For checks one, five, five, seven, nine, two, one, five, six, one, seven? Oh, yeah, that was right.
So I feel like in the past, we eliminated the numbers of the voiding checks. So it's been like this number to this number, comma, this is this, that you're seeing that they're, to these?
Yes, and so this might have been something I talked about the last meeting, and I, um, apologize if it. So, uh, and some of the work that Lawrence and I are doing for process improvement. We are trying to move towards as many credit card payments as possible and reduce the amount of checks that we have to rely. There's a lot of, um, risk with, uh, theft and fraud with checks. Um, and so Kathy, she were here who reminds of that. Um, and so in doing so, um, we've actually reduced, uh, some of the way that the print, the printing on the checks itself works. So, um, there's a finite amount of information that we're able to include on that list of the check. And in the past, when we moved with Amazon, because Amazon was usually our first check, um, we could, we filled that first whole page. So we needed to go onto the second page of the check, and thus that check at the bottom was avoided. And so we moved to, because of the framework of staff and whatnot, um, we moved to a new invoicing system with, um, Amazon. And so, uh, the, the way that it works now, um, the issue, I believe, is it's just the one. It's just the one check. Um, and so that greatly reduces the amount of, of print that is required, um, on the print out of the check. So it's, we're never needing to void that next number anymore.
Okay, you, you mentioned something about, sorry for the voiding checks.
Yes, there are two voided checks on the bottom here. Total of thirty-nine checks, two voided. That was a, that was a copyer, so I was just getting a lot more to her.
And expected, so normally we would not move with the voided check, no less. Right, but because you have a wage, and, and one was to be voided checks.
So voided check numbers are not included. Then all three, right, then moves to approve checks. Okay, do I have a second?
Awesome.
All right, so this is also, um, a voice, no, this is the roll call vote. Um, trustee Shaw, hi, trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Burr, trustee Green, hi, trustee Graziano, hi. The eyes have in the check dispersal report for April nineteenth through May seventeenth. So moving on, um, we have committee reports. And so the three committees that I've met since the last board meeting are the finance committee, the human resources committee, and intergovernmental committee, but I'll explain. We sort of met, we sort of did, so, um. Bill, is there an update on the finance committee? I don't remember if you were able to.
No, I think, was that all so many volume?
It was, um. Right, yeah, I thought it was pretty helpful to do that. He did that, he took that out of the, yeah. Yeah, okay. So nobody on this list was there, um, at that meeting. Um, so he could just, he put eye on this. He were, but he were a member of four who were in place. Maybe like very, whatever update, like to share of the finance committee.
No, I mean, the combined findings, HR, committee. Why do I feel like we've already been?
Yeah, that's pretty likely, that was people with the last meeting. That was previous, yeah.
I think it might have been.
Yeah, because I was thinking the finance.
So that's mine there, if I can say the role we need.
Right, because I think the one we pulled out was the one that we, we approved, uh, every budget, and then we approved the, yes.
That is my fault, so starting that new agenda, there is no finance committee, a standalone finance committee for.
Like it's right the one I saw, I'm like, very, very sure I understand.
Yeah, of course, I, of course, yes.
Thank you, John. Moving on, I know that the human resources committee didn't do this. They didn't. Um, we did meet, um, because we are working on, uh, the six-month review for the director and annual review. So we're, um, yeah, I'm cautious for that. And, uh, we have been drafting, um, the inception. Um, some forms that we use for employees or trustees and as well as managers. So that everyone can provide feedback for the director. This year is, um, unique because in, uh, when we hired the new director, we, uh, in her proposal, we, uh, we said that we're going to do a six-month review as well as an annual. So we're looking to get as much feedback as possible in the six-month review as well as the annual review. So, um, we've been putting in some, um, so we're going through a new process. So Bonnie was there as well. We plan to have a presentation available for the trustees in, and so, June. That will be all of these months. So we are going to be meeting again at the beginning of June to finalize what we've done. And have guests.
Anything I'll add is that we do go into a second session and the next meeting is going to be one week.
Thank you so much, human resources committee.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, a lot of great work. I mean, I think that's, yeah. No, I mean, just in general, like the whole year, yeah, you've done such a great job, I'm so glad that you're here.
And you know, I love forms. They're all together. Um, okay, so while I'm, um, a member of the intergovernmental committee, I'm not the trustee member, but I will share the update about the intergovernmental committee. Um, so this was supposed to be a meeting of the library, museum, and the village. As I, uh, explained earlier, it's representatives from the library, two representatives from the museum, and then the village. To discuss, um, a variety of things, including, um, building work, um, including the reimbursement that we get from the village every year for hosting these network sites. Um, there are other discussions that need to be had, including, um, the cleaning, uh, group service contract. They want to increase, um, from one month, from one day a month to, uh, twice weekly. And so I have prepared the financial, the financials for that increase with the cleaning company's proposal. Um, there, there was a, um, Jamie wasn't able to make the meeting. And so we all met as if we were going to be, Bonnie was there in attendance as an observer only, since she is not a member of the committee. And, um, and so when there was a moment in which we had to decide, trustee Phil and I discussed, um, our comfort level of moving on to the committee meeting, and we both agreed that it would be best to have Jamie, um, present for that meeting, uh, but since she was not able to make it, um, we opted to, uh, close the meeting, we never really even started it. Um, and so we're going to reschedule for either the, well, it's likely the end of May after the twenty-second. We have several, uh, trips that we are going on, so the scheduling of this meeting is the hardest one of any group that I have, um, because there are so many different people's schedules, but, um, things are okay, everything's fine. It was more of a time, um, confusion, but, um, anything else to add?
Yeah, just, just, it, it was our last minute stamp, who took a lot of that work up? Just a feeding, the cycle, hey, just, just as an observer role. And then to Diana Lynn, from K with the labor genie, and then, okay, college course, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, how much time do you? Give the professor to show up.
Um, you mentioned you had a, you can familiarize yourself with media reading, then it's.
Yeah, it's the museums do propose to move over to the meeting with the hair. Sorry, I, I, probably will do that inside. There to be a active participant in this.
I think that was the best choice. Um, I look forward to rescheduling that meeting as soon as I can, so that's something I have to. Questions for any of the committees reports? There are none. Um, I do want to move to whole business, which is, um, a topic that was brought up at a previous board meeting, the trustee recognition fund. I thought it may be helpful to, um, provide a brief overview of that for the new, um, trustees. And then further discussion will happen at the HR committee meeting, um, that we can postpone that topic for the next committee. Would you like to provide a overview of that proposal? Sure. Um, okay, this, uh, I, I work in the, um, our business, and so last year, we, it was really wonderful. The trustee provided, um, two, they provided two lunches for us, actually one breakfast and one lunch. And I thought it was such a nice, uh, way to recognize the hard work that the staff had done. And so, uh, I, when we talked about this, I realized in the past that, uh, the board might demand it's more informative, but we, um, proposed, starting a new fund, that the trustees could help provide through contribution, um, that we could set up this fund and the director would be in charge of it, and then we'd use this fund throughout the year to provide hospitality events for the staff to get together and be able to celebrate successes, like recently the library, um, won the star of them. And that was very exciting, and I think it would be so nice if the trustees were able to provide a time for the staff to get together and celebrate, I think, all the hard work they've been doing here. Um, so we proposed it, um, possibly every April, so at the start of our, uh, year this whole year, that we would invite trustees to provide a contribution to go and work this fund, and then the director could provide events throughout the year to celebrate all the hard work. And it would be something that the trustees. And it was discussed or proposed at, um, the last board meeting with, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I did, this is all on God. Yeah, I was just gonna add, trustee Meyerbaum was like, we had a proposal, or there was a proposal, and and she suggested, well, it could just be a letter, you know, inviting the trustees to participate in this. So, uh, I wanted to make sure that you both had the background in this, uh, proposal from trustee Graziano. Um, I'll repeat for this meeting too, I have literally nothing to do with it. Um, this was trustee Graziano's idea that she wanted to be presenting to you all. Um, and so we talked about it briefly at the HR committee meeting. Um, we tampered it for the next HR committee meeting, uh, because, uh, Jamie wasn't in attendance, and Bonnie wanted more time with it, how to do stuff, but we're still. So, um, it will come back. Thank you. Any questions for Jenny? Moving on to our new business, um, I'd like to, uh, mention in your board packet, section fifteen, um, there is a resolution, um, for adapting prevailing wage rates for the Lakeview public library. This is something that is done annually, um, that has a annual meeting for, um, the first one meeting of the new school year. And so, um, I will read the resolution as it's stated, it's the, it's, um, there are no changes to the resolution as from previous years. Um, and so, uh, after I read that, I'll look up for any discussion or questions, and then we'll go back to the vote. Whereas the state of Illinois has a prevailing wage act, the Act eight hundred and twenty I L C S one thirty, zero point zero one. And whereas the act requires that the board of library trustees ascertain the prevailing rate of wages in the locality of the library for laborers, mechanics, and other workers performing construction upon works for the library. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board of library trustees as follows. Section one, the general prevailing rate of wages in this locality is hereby ascertained to be the same as the prevailing wage rate for construction work in Lake County as determined by the Department of Labor of the state of Illinois. Section two, the board secretary shall keep this resolution available for inspection in the main office of the library, my office. Promptly file a certified copy of this resolution with the secretary of state and the department of labor in the state of Illinois. Um, I can do that with, uh, with the county going forward. Um, and cause to be published in a newsletter, a newspaper of general circulation, a notice of this library action. Mail a copy of this resolution to any employer and to any association of employers, and to any person or association of employees who have filed their names and addresses requesting copies of this determination. Here we go. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage of approval. Is there any discussion regarding this resolution? If, if none, do I have a motion, uh, to approve the resolution? Number two thousand twenty-three dash zero five dash sixteen dash. Second. Second. So this is going to be a roll call vote as well? Oh, no, this is, this is just a voice vote, okay, I apologize. Um, so we're going to move into a voice vote, um, all in favor? And I have opposed, made a sentence. The resolution has been used very much, and so with this, I have the official resolution for your signature agree. And I'm going to invite Ally. That is well. So I believe this also is not authorized. Well, yes, you know, that's okay, I just saw a place for the seal. Not really, it's actually, okay, I'm wanting to get out of, I'm sitting on the wall. Martha, this is Dan Brady. I will scan this and upload it to the website.
The cause to be published.
Please say that again, sorry.
So in terms of the cause to be published. There's that one of, like, slated.
Well, that's gonna be a question that I have to research. Um, I don't know, have there been previous board members remember about that, or Martha, or, you know? Or, 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 or. Yeah, there's. You don't write about that, I mean, I do this. Or, I'm listening.
You say, the library director, we can only handle that.
Okay, I mean, it only makes sense, it just says, the board secretary shall, but I just figured I'd work with Ally, you know, the most of us, if not all of them. Thank you.
The year I was the secretary, I know I didn't.
Okay.
I don't know, wait back in the minutes or something. Yes, he probably.
Moving on to the next and last item of new business. Um, this is merely a presentation of a draft, uh, document that I am working on, um, with the staff. So, um, we don't currently have a strategic plan or a long range plan. However, staff did just finish their performance evaluations. And all staff have goals that they are working towards in the next year. And so what I've done is compile a list of goals or objectives for each individual staff. I've anonymized them, of course. And I categorize them based on, um. The categories you see in the board report, um, which are created, were created to align with the library committees, the library board committees. So that you can see how the work of the library staff rolls up to the board and the board work rolls up to the organization as a whole. Um, this is not the final one this round. But I'll share in previous, um, organizations that I've worked at. Um, the strategic plan is often two to three years, it has been twenty-five, but nowadays organizations change, so three is usually where there is. And that, um, strategic plan is, um, uh, really a little bit more, um, goal oriented, um. Larger, uh, uh, aspects of work and less task or objective related. And so, um, in my experience, there's always been an annual work plan for managers to develop together to, uh. Document the work of staff towards those larger, maybe broader strategic targets. Um, and so we don't have that larger strategic plan look yet, but that's not to say there's not work to do. And so in my first five months, um, you know, with the managers and all staff, we really learned about a lot of opportunities for work. Um, in the organization. So even aside from, um, a strategic plan, which is part of our work plan, you'll note that, um. The under administration, it says create a new long range plan for Lakeview Public Library. And I just, I identified a few, um, starting points that, uh, the teams, um, involved will, um, put perhaps, uh, develop. Um, I wanted to share this with you to review, know what the staff are working on. Um, you know, some of these goals or these objectives relate to evaluation. For example, I just had a great conversation with Jill the other day to talk about our seed library. Um, you know, how long have we been doing this, how do we evaluate it, how do we, um, tell the story of successes? You know, what statistics are we gathering, can we get future feedback, uh, about how it's being used in the community? I mean, there's an opportunity, as I stated already, to look at the regular statistics that we take every month and share with you. Um, so that it, uh, is, is a. A look at the outputs that are most meaningful for the board to determine the success of the organization. Um, and an accurate reflection of the work of staff. So, um, this is just an FYI in a sense, um, so it's not an official document. Um, but it is going to be an internal document that staff will use to guide their prioritization of work. Um, so as new opportunities come up, um, you know, this will be a document that staff look to see to really help make decisions and prioritize. You know, short term and long term work with this. And hopeful that we'll be able to have work plans every year now. Um, is, I think that some of the feedback I got from managers in just presenting the staff was very positive. Um, and I do also think that it's helpful for staff to see their contributions and a plan that worked, works towards organizational goals. So everybody is reflected in this. Having over the ten questions. Thank you, hearing none, is there any other business?
Sorry, I do have a little, I can't talk to her, but.
Oh, um.
How are you thinking about having this two? I own, pardon me, incorrect. What's, what, what assumption you're gonna take to get yours today?
So I just received the final copies of the performance evaluations for all staff. Um, so they're fully signed off and written from the managers. So I have to incorporate those final performance evaluations, those goals into the document. Uh, I want to, I've already done the, the managers' ones, more of a presentation of the document, what it is. Um, for them to review it, you know, kind of soak it in. And then I want to bring it to a manager meeting to discuss, is this a list that contains mandatory goals here? Is this too much, is it not enough, are these the appropriate goals? Because they also include some, um, goals and objectives I have myself, too, for the organization. Um, job descriptions, that, that's a great, um, a great one. We also need to, and I discuss this with the managers, we need to identify which quarter of this whole year we aim to complete each item. So, it may not be that after, you know, we get a chance, we, our. Our object is to complete draft procedural documents to stress that career best practices for purchasing will be good questions. Maybe we identify quarter three for now, maybe you can get that done early in its quarter two. I'm typically, um, accustomed to identifying the timeframe and then checking back with the document. Um, pretty regularly to update what would be that, um, that end date or that completion date is. And then there would be an annual, um, report out to the board of the annual work plan. I kind of skimmed a couple of sections, which is presentation to staff. Um, so once the managers and, um, I have worked together to identify when we think people have accomplished these items, you know. Each task or each goal, um, will be presenting this to staff. We don't need for staff meetings during the summer because summer reading club is so immense and requires a lot of staffing. And we just are generally seeing this, it's the busiest time of the library over the summer. So, um, I see that this could actually be there at this summer meeting. Um, and there would be work towards this entire inning. Um, but a formal presentation of staff and offering questions and, um. Input, uh, then that would be on the basis of.
Um, so as you mentioned, one of my thoughts, looking at this list is, wow, do we have the capacity? To tackle all of this. The other thing is, I see some things here that are clearly also overlooked with the board and the committee.
Yes.
Um. So, I, I just had to think through, is there a way to really weigh the list against capacity? And perhaps a high medium work, simple buckets?
Mm-hmm.
Um. To help with. These are the things we'll definitely do. These are the things we'll do if we have, like, if we have some last few to do with it, but this is the year.
It's free.
Yeah, exactly, just.
Prioritizing the priorities. Yes, that's what it says.
Yeah. It, the, I, what I saw in the packet earlier, that guy or what.
You know? And this isn't even. Really all that needs to be done, it's just one year. But we got a school, you and I have talked, we've talked in, um, other committees, we don't really find that right spoke. So, managers have had a turn with this, um, for several weeks now. So, um, not next week, but the week after, um, we'll be restarting our manager meetings again, do a couple of staff rotations at the highest level. Um, so, uh, while we have a couple of other internal topics to prioritize, just staffing, um, our best. Which is a, a very important, uh, topic. Um, we also need to figure out what this year is, because you can easily get into this, like, um. Well, I've seen it happen already, you know, staff fall out sick and then you're just trying to survive on a daily basis. You don't have this overarching order we try to do. How are the short term, long term goals, what are we working towards? And what can we shift and change on a daily basis? Um, we've had all these conversations. I really appreciate that advice, I think you should definitely.
This still not a lot of capacity. But I do have a tool I've built between my professional life and having to share, that is making a strategic plan for exactly. Quarterly and under each. Happy to share that.
Well, well, yeah, thank you. And I recognize you, I'm still new, so, um, having been here for five months, there's a lot that. I'm learning about my capacity to move things forward because of film and having to take priority. And it often does, actually. Um, so, you know, I think that it will be good exercise for all of us to think through what can we achieve in a year.
And, and also thinking through things like, well, how much of the standard work ethic is. The doors open for each. Staff member of the, of the, and how much time do I really have for these? For strategic, uh, day to day operational.
And I, to my, to my knowledge, I have big staff here have ever done an analysis, like an hour by hour analysis. Whereas I have with other staff of like, what type of work do you do this hour? And then you have to make one entire week so that you can get a sense of like the rhythm of the week and how much time is desk? How much time is private time? How much time is program time? And then you kind of look at your job description when you say, okay, the X percentage of this, of my job is spent doing this. We don't, we have job descriptions for staff and managers have this now. Um, that's the role of ours, that would be hybrid. Because we do have a salary benchmarking proposal that I will share at our next board meeting, um, which we're going to. Any other business, uh, to come forth with, say?
Yeah, I have some one question, um, you know, I have the dates.
Yeah.
For volunteer of the community.
Yes, I didn't include that in the packet, but, um, I've given the new board members a copy of the, the backhand out. Um, and so to reference what Jenny is referencing, or, um, to play with Jenny's referencing. There was a list of, uh, community engagement dates for the board, you're all welcome to purpose eight. In events such as, do you want to cover just a brief overview?
I feel like I can fill this now, I mean, the, the biggest one is marching with us in the parade on the Fourth of July. Um, we have the. Book bike at the Arts Fest, which is on June seventeenth. And the auto show, we also have the book bike at the auto show on, um, June twenty-fourth.
So, in your, you said, we email you, um, the date that you're interested in the event and, um, I'll make a work of Joe.
Yeah, Joe, I think most of us know what being part of, for, for, for the parade looks like. As a board member, like, yeah, we literally, which would be staff.
Mm-hmm.
Or does it look like, if you volunteer at, say, the auto show, and the book bike is there?
So, um, what my hope is for the Arts Fest and the auto show, which are, we've participated in the past at the Arts Fest. But not in this type of capacity, and this is the first year that we're going to the art auto show. We were invited, um, by the museum to bring the book bike, which I thought was kind of adorable. Um, so my hope is to actually theme the book bike, um, so at the Arts Fest, we would have some books about, you know. Art for adults and children and talk about our resources at the library. At Arts Fest, we'll be doing some chalk drawing, um, outside on the corner of, um, Scranton and Center. So kids can, well, all ages can draw on the sidewalks and everything. So it's basically, um, helping the public be a little bit more accessible to our resources and what we're doing. Um, what we're asking of the board, though, specifically, is to participate, to come and really talk to the public. And just engage with people that come by and are asking what we're up to. Um, that's the, the main priority that we're looking for. It should also give you the great opportunity to have a little bit more face with, with people that may not necessarily come to our building.
I'll email that document again to the board, just so I really have it.
Has a little description for each one.
Yeah, perfect. Any other business to come to the board tonight? Then, uh, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Speech of Jim.
I want second.
All right. Um, all those in favor? If I have one little votes, I think the meeting is adjourned at nine oh three AM.